There's liability, there's danger. Who wants to do that? Where? Rest in peace. He does this.
Grill. Okay. It is up from the column. What about one day? Good. Trying to make sense of Phil Rock from Westlake. That's them as people. We'll get him. They won't. How long ago on? Did you race anybody out of the parking lot? Thank you. Thank you. I was still on. So it runs a little bit. You rocks on. You don't have.
I, I would.
Oh, we're not, yeah. That's great. Highly working. He'll feed it every week. Race. You know, every color, every time. Even like your phone now. It was pretty intense. Five and three. It's been your mom's. I've been telling you that. Oh, boy. Turn down. Here. Yeah, well, you can leave me in there. Star was born.
Woo, Heidi.
Showing what it's like?
Yes, I feel.
Good enough. Constantly. Always screening. Technology of that.
It's been my dream.
Yep. Here's right away. Judge Walker.
I don't know.
Recording in progress.
All right, I would like to call our Monday, July 7th, City of Madison Commission Meeting to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, I will ask Amy to take a roll call for tonight's meeting.
Commissioner Dibdall?
Here.
Commissioner Cronin?
Here.
Commissioner Wire?
Here.
Mr. Mayor Lindsay?
Here.
Do I call to order the new commissioner or not? Okay. Thank you.
And I'll ask for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, next item of business is oath of office for Daniel Burish. Come up, or how do we? All right, is it a right hand?
Yeah, right here.
Right hand? I can. Uh, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear, I do solemnly swear, or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the state of South Dakota, and the Constitution of the state of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Commissioner for the City of Madison, Lake County, to the best of my ability. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Commissioner for the City of Madison, Lake County, to the best of my ability. Thank you. Then we need signatures. I didn't. Congrats.
Welcome, ma'am.
All right. Welcome, Dan, and I'll move into tonight's consent calendar. Is there anything anybody would like to remove or pull out and bring into tonight's meeting discussion? If nothing heard, I'll, I'll ask for approval of the consent calendar.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. Um, we'll move into. Do we need a vote? Voice vote.
Aye.
All in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, sorry. All right, with that, we'll move into item number seventeen. Authorize the mayor to sign amended permit to occupy the right of way with Dakota State University. Jameson, do you have further detail, or Ryan?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an item that was on the last commission agenda. So the city commission has approved this permit last January, and it was at this point unsigned by Dakota State. They wanted to add a different indemnification clause in there, which was acceptable to the city. But the last meeting, when this was tabled, we were waiting on the exhibit to accompany it. And so now you'll see in the agenda packet that we have the updated permit to occupy right of way as well as the accompanying exhibit to go with it. And with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
This is all the same agreement, just, just an exhibit attached, correct?
Same agreement as last meeting, correct?
Any questions, comments? All right, with that, I'll, I'll ask for a, for a motion. I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign amended permit to occupy the right of way for Dakota State University.
Second.
The motion in a second, all in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, that carries. Now into new business. Public hearing for the application of a temporary retail on sale alcohol license for the Greater Madison area Chamber of Commerce Downtown Madtown. Jameson, is that yours?
Yes, this is a hearing for anybody who'd like to speak towards it. I guess I can give some brief background on that. So I think our community is familiar at this point with the downtown and madtown events that are hosted every summer. There are six in this concert series, and the dates are July 15 and 22, and then August 5, 12, 19, and 26. And these are concert events that occur in our downtown. We allow the, the chamber to block off the streets to put up the venue. And then this is the alcohol license to, to serve alcohol at that. This is a temporary retail on sale alcohol license. I'll stand by for questions, or if anybody from the audience would like to speak to it, that would be a good time.
Any comments from the audience?
Eric Hortness, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. Just a, a couple of things. We are taking that last Tuesday in July off so that the Miracle Treat Day and the Downtown Madtown isn't in the, in the same week. So that July 29th, we are not having a Downtown Madtown event, which then pushes our last one to when all of the DSU students are, are back. So hopefully, we can get a lot of DSU students down for that last event in August as well. So still six weeks, but we're taking one week off.
All right, thank you, Eric. Anybody, anyone else? All right, with that, we will close the hearing, and we'll move into item number nineteen. Consider the approval of the temporary retail on sale alcohol license for the Greater Madison area Chamber of Commerce Downtown Madtown.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor signify by stating aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. Item number twenty, Delon Mork with Dairy Queen on the overview of the 2025 Miracle Treat Day.
I wanted to introduce myself as Delon Mork, Executive Director of the Dairy Queen, but I didn't know if Horp would take offense to that, so.
Well, we can note that here.
Uh, just wanted to kind of update you guys and gals on what we're doing this year for our Miracle Treat Day. We have had the same or very similar event every year for nineteen years, this being our twentieth. And I have to carefully say that it's our twentieth because it is not Dairy Queen's twentieth because they did not have, uh, American Dairy Queen did not have an event in 2020. They allowed South Dakota to have an event, but we had to change the name to South Dakota Sweet Miracles. But in our store, it is our twentieth Miracle Treat Day. And to, uh, to add to our celebration this year, we realized last year, actually, that we're getting close to a million dollars raised in our store. So this year, to coincide with the twentieth Miracle Treat Day, we will eclipse a million, the million dollar mark. We've got to go really hard to get there, but we've taken some extra measures to do that this year. We've got a, an online raffle, got four quarters of beef and processing paid for, a sauna, a cold plunge tub, and a really nice article of furniture from Montgomery's Furniture. So we've got lots of raffle items. We're selling some ceiling tiles that children, that are in the children's hospital for a minimum of fourteen days or have a fatal type of disease, get to make a ceiling tile. So we're going to gather twenty-five of those from current kids, five of them being NICU families, which is really cool. So we'll have the moms and dads, brothers and sisters kind of help put this together of, of what they maybe hope to see their brother or sister grow into. So the combination of our normal Miracle Treat Day sales, ceiling tiles, and then the online auction, combined with a really cool concert that night. Recording artist Koffe Anderson is going to be here. He's a country artist out of Bangs, Texas. So we're excited to have him, and we've set a goal of a hundred thousand dollars to raise. We've never talked about dollars. We've always talked about blizzards. But we're in that fifty-five to sixty thousand dollar range the last number of years. So if we can hit a hundred thousand, that will put us actually well over the million dollar mark this year, and we're excited to do that. The, the thing that I would like to ask you guys is we're doing a, I've hired a, a marketing firm this year to help us get the word out and help facilitate all of the different things that we're doing. And one of the things that they'd like to incorporate with all of their marketing is they would love to see the, the banner above Eagan Avenue changed to "Welcome to Miracle City, South Dakota." And Governor Roden is doing a proclamation to change the name of South Dakota to Madison, to Miracle City for a day. And so I would like to see you guys help us support that in allowing me to put that sign across there. If your blessing is given, we'll get the sign built. I would say Troy Fox can have it in a week or maybe even a little quicker, and we will install it. We will pay for it. It won't cost the city anything. It won't bother the current sign that's there. We're not going to attach to it. We will go over the frame of the existing sign that's up there. So if you guys can see fit to allowing me to do that for maybe a month, uh, give us about three weeks before the event and a week after, or whatever. I don't, I'm, whatever your timeline, whatever makes sense to you guys. But it'll be a fair amount of cost in it, so we'd like to have it up there as soon as we can, and as soon as we can after, get it down after Miracle Treat Day is fine.
Anybody have any questions? Comments? Tomatoes thrown or anything? Come on, Justin, you're never at a loss of words.
Delon has discussed that with me, and, and I support it.
Thanks, Roy.
I was going to say, Delon, you know, you kind of set the bar for community service and some of the things that go on in this town. And I think for the past nineteen years, raising that amount of cash for people in need of, of that nature, that's very commendable. So I think for year twenty, for us to be able to step up and be able to assist in something like that, I think that's something we should do.
I appreciate that. Just a, a side note, I had a great conversation with the CEO of Dairy Queen the other day, and he asked what they could do to help. I said, well, first, let's, let's identify it. I said, Troy, you've got, I believe, six thousand in some stores in the U.S. He said, that is correct. I said, how many of them are going to eclipse a million dollars raised for CMN this year? He said, that's easy, none, just, just you, nobody else. So I placed my ask on them to support some of our social media because they've got fifteen million followers, and, and we could use their help in pushing some select items, and he agreed to do that. So I thought that was cool, too. They've got a lot of stores to think about, and they're cautious to offend any of the other stores. But he thought it made sense to help, so I was appreciative of that.
Yeah, I'd just say I'm in support, too. I think, you know, this, this event is actually part of our community's identity, and if we can support it, awesome.
Appreciate that, Kelly, thank you.
I agree a hundred percent. Thank you for everything that you do for the community.
Yeah, it's my pleasure. We're fortunate to be able to have a name and a brand that people trust, and, and this community understands that. And, and that's the great thing about living in South Dakota, maybe the Midwest, but for sure, South Dakota. People want to help their neighbors. We want to know them and want to help them, and it's pretty cool.
Are we able to use our social media platforms as well to share, to help share, and?
Yes, certainly, we can, we can coordinate with Dairy Queen however you would like to see us coordinate.
I guess I'd like to see at least that and/or, you know, any other assistance, you know, behind the scenes with setup tables. I'm committing Mike back there a little bit, but, uh, you know, we've done it before, but, you know, within reason of what's, what can be done with the staff we have. So I'm open to put, you know, some, that information or that help out there as well, if we can.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion on this, or just acknowledgement, or?
You certainly could make a motion. I've, the feedback I've heard from all five of you are, are that you're supportive of coordinating, and we can certainly do that.
No, great. This is a great event that aligns with what Eric's doing as well. So this is a, just extends our month of July.
I'd like to thank publicly the chamber for moving around our week this year. What they do is amazing, and it's wonderful, but people only have so much time during the week with all the other activities and things going on. So that was very kind of them this year to move off our week, so do appreciate it.
I guess I'll make a motion that the city allows Dairy Queen and Fox promotion to put up that sign starting today, and then you'd have, I would say, up to two to three weeks afterwards to remove it.
We won't let it linger on, but, thank you.
A second.
All right, motion in a second. Do we have any other further comments, or? All right, we'll go, all in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries, thank you, Delon.
Thanks, appreciate it. Thanks, Delon.
That brings us to item number twenty-one, our first reading of Ordinance 1680, "The Regulation of Wheeled Electronically Propelled Devices." I'm going to go with, that's Justin's item tonight.
Yeah, so I, obviously, we've been seeing a lot of these scooters and any other electric propelled devices out on our streets and our sidewalks. So basically, what we're trying to do is bring all of those in, and this would be bicycles, the one-wheeled skateboards, and we've even seen a few of those unicycles around. Some of them tap out at twenty miles an hour. Some of them can do, the unicycles can go up to fifty-five and much faster. So what we're trying to do is regulate the speed that they would be on our sidewalks. And we're looking to amend Section 4290 and just say that anybody that's on electric, electric propelled device can't be doing more than fifteen miles an hour on our sidewalks. And then if they're going to be out on in the street with those, and they're exceeding twenty miles an hour, they have to wear a helmet and eye protection. And that they cannot do that if they're over twenty miles an hour. So then the other thing into this is, is we're going to put this under the bicycle section, and so it would basically regulate them so they have to operate as if they were on a bicycle. They have to regu, abide by all the traffic laws. They have to stop at all the traffic direction devices, speed, all of that. So basically, it's a way that we can regulate how they're operating on the streets and off the streets, on the sidewalks, to try and make our city a little bit safer when it comes to these. Understand that this needs to go back to mom and dad at home and have a conversation with those kids when they buy them these things, when they allow them to ride them, know that there are rules of the road that they need to abide by them, so that education needs to start at home. Our officers have been out there interacting with these folks for the last six weeks or so, trying to let them know that there are rules, they can't just be zipping across intersections, trying to educate them, have those conversations with their friends. I do know they just had an accident with one of these in a city south of here, and we're trying to avoid that. So that's why we're looking to do this. We'll take any questions if anybody's got any.
I just have one question. Is there any licensing or permitting required for electronic scooters from the state level?
No, there is not.
So they don't become classified into, let's say, a motorcycle where you'd actually need a permit or anything? There is no permitting or licensing required at that?
At this point, there is not, yeah. They are new enough, and they are growing in popularity, and I fully support Justin's efforts in that in bringing forward some guidelines that hopefully, parents will see, read, and help inform whoever's riding them and that, that they're not only, you know, a danger to themselves when they're riding them, but they're a danger to the general public and the other vehicles. And as he just said, we want to try to avoid having an incident, you know, that we regret in the future.
And it's twenty, twenty miles an hour require a helmet and eye protection, is that how it reads it?
Anything twenty and over would require a helmet and eye protection, yes.
A helmet for eighteen up, or eight, under eighteen, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And then eye protection would be for anybody regardless of age?
Yes. And then by defining it as a bicycle, they would have to follow all the rules that are set forth in Article forty of our city ordinances. They can't be riding them in the core area on the sidewalk. If they're going to be riding them in the core area, they need to be in the lane of traffic. We don't want anybody coming out of a store and getting run over at twenty miles an hour or fifteen miles an hour.
Are they more common on the sidewalk or in the roads right now? I, I guess I'm not even.
It's fifty-fifty. We've had some that, those one-wheel skateboards, we've seen them going down the road on the sidewalk at twenty miles an hour, and they'll get to a driveway, and they zip out onto the lane of traffic, and they'll go for a block, and they'll hit the next driveway, and they go back up onto the sidewalk. So it all depends time of day, the amount of traffic flow. In the evenings, you typically see them out in the roadway more than you do on the sidewalk. In this summer and that, I've also seen younger kids riding them when there should be headlights and when headlights are on the automobiles. And Justin has addressed that as well in this ordinance.
I imagine reflectors and everything are called out, just like a bike, I mean, we're saying it's a bike.
Correct, just like a bike, they have to have lights, reflectors, and then also under Section 4295, it says that no person under the age of twelve shall operate or propel a bicycle upon any street after the hour of nine P.M. So typically, in the summertime, we're light until nine-thirty at least. That would get these younger folks off of those machines prior to dark.
All right, do we have any further questions or comments? Not hearing any, I will entertain a motion for item number twenty-one tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1680, "Regulation of Wheeled Electronically Propelled Devices."
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion in a second, all in favor signify by stating aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? All right, that motion carries. That'll bring us into, up to item number twenty-two, "Approve Resolution 2025-13 Approving and Recommending Tax Incremental District Plan Number Seven." That sounds like a Jameson topic.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Toby Morris from Collier Security is going to be here in person to speak towards a few of these items. His estimated time of arrival, six fifteen, so I recommend bypassing items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four until you can get here.
All right, he got caught in the storm, so let, we'll move items twenty-two through twenty-four. Where do you want them, after twenty-nine?
I, I think you can just pick them up whenever he gets in, if you'd like.
Whenever Toby arrives. All right, we'll jump to item number twenty-five, "Approve Change Order Number One, North Eagan Avenue Reconstruction and Utility Improvements, Winter Contracting LLC." Is that Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this change order, change order number one, consists of two components. One is a sewer service adjustment. So during construction, a six-inch sewer service was discovered at a location where it was assumed to be a four-inch service. So as a result, the required fitting needed to change from an eight-by-four Y to an eight-by-six sewer Y. So this modification increases the cost of the fitting by a hundred dollars from four hundred dollars to five hundred. And that's, I would consider a fair and reasonable adjustment. The other component is a schedule extension. This change order includes a ten-working-day extension to Phase One schedule. Phase One goes from Second Street to Third Street. So this extension would allow winter contracting in their subcontractors to complete additional water and storm sewer extensions. Those components were initially planned for Phase Two A. But this extension helps out in a number of ways. One of the, one of the main components is it will allow that Third Street intersection to be open sooner, and it also reduces the number of water shutdowns we have. So this extension of ten days only affects the interim completion date for Phase One and does not impact the interim completion date of Phases Two A or Two B, so nor, nor does it affect the overall project completion date. So that's the change order in a nutshell, and I'll stand by with any questions.
The additional ten days, I'm assuming is weather-related, or?
Um, it's just for that extra work. So we had estimated it would take about ten extra days to do the water, the sewer, and then the additional paving.
So they're just taking a little bit of Phase Two, completing it with Phase One.
Yeah.
The overall end completion date remains the same?
That's right.
For Phase One and Two?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and the interim completion date for this year's project is November fifteenth of 2025, so that should be completed then from Second Street to Fifth Street. That includes all paving, all sidewalks, all landscaping.
Make a motion to approve change order number one, North Eagan Avenue.
Make a motion to approve change order number one, North Egan Avenue Reconstruction and Utility Improvements with Winter Contracting LLC.
Second.
Motion and a second, all, all in favor signify by stating aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? All right, item twenty-five carries. We'll move into item number twenty-six, approve Madison Water System Improvements Engineering Services Amendment Number One, Banner Associates. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so the city entered into four contracts with Banner Associates back in twenty-twenty for engineering services, design and construction of streets, storm sewer, sanitary sewer and water system. Um, we call this our Water System Improvements, R D, project. Um, this project was funded through the rural development, uh, loans and, and grants. Um, those projects were known as phases one A, one B, two A, and two B. Um, all construction work and engineering has been completed, and Banner is currently preparing the final submittal packages and closeout document, documents for, uh, delivery to us and then to R D. Um, this amendment letter serves as a review and reconciliation of engineering fees and requests modifications to the existing agreements. Um, so this, for the streets, it would be a decrease of approximately thirty-four thousand from the original, um, contract estimate. For the storm sewer would be a decrease of about sixty-nine thousand, sanitary sewer a decrease of a hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred roughly. And then the, uh, engineering services contract for the water main is an increase of twelve thousand five hundred dollars, or approximately twelve thousand five hundred. Um, so the total amount then is a deduction of two-hundred-twenty-three-thousand-three-hundred-twenty-five dollars and thirty-two cents from the original estimate.
Any questions for Ryan? Jameson, anything to add there? That's, you know, anytime we have a project deduct like that, it's...
Yeah, and our contracts with Banner, they're set up to be an amount not to exceed. Um, we hope we then, then fall under that. Um, as you're well aware, these R D projects, they lingered on a long time. Um, so we were able to, uh, well, not able to, we, we were put in the position where we were forced to, you know, assess some liquidated damages. So in addition to those liquidated damages, um, these, this deduction is, is definitely a good thing. We were concerned at that time that, you know, we were gonna eat up that full amount due to the contractor not finishing on time, but the combination of this and those, uh, liquidated damages kind of puts us in a good situation.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll make a motion to approve Madison Water System Improvements Engineering Services Amendment Number One, Banner Associates, Inc.
Second. The motion and a second, all in favor signify by stating aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries, thank you. We'll go into item number twenty-seven, discussion and possible action to direct staff to create a park, or a parks master plan. Jameson, will you start?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a lot of amazing park assets in the community, and we also have a lot of desires from the community to continue to grow or, or to adjust those assets. And so that is leading staff to wonder whether we need to be looking at a master planning effort to, um, collect, um, engagement and, and input and feedback from the public to help prioritize and direct where our efforts be spent moving forward. Last year, we created a recreational trail master plan, were able to do that internally with staff, so we didn't hire any consultants to do that, and, uh, we were really happy with the, the immense amount of feedback we received from the public, and I think we put together a pretty nice plan. So if we wanna move forward with, uh, a strategic conversation on our park assets, we believe we could do something similar i- um, here, where we're using internal resources to gather that public feedback, put together a plan, and prioritize where we're wanting to be. And the Parks Board, um, is, is supportive of this, uh, effort, and they would have a very close, um, role in, in creating this plan. I, I would note that over the last, I'd say, year, the, the Parks Board has received a lot of requests from the public for different things that they would either want to see added to the community, new amenities, or expanding current assets. Um, and they're all great ideas and then they're great plans, but again, we have limited resources, we have a number of, uh, park assets that need to be reevaluated, and so we feel that with that public engagement and feedback, we can help to prioritize where the best place is for resources to be allocated. Mike, anything to add? Okay, nothing from the peanut gallery tonight?
The intent is in-house, we'll put this plan together?
Yep, so of course, staff time and resources would, would be considerable, but we're not looking at hiring this out to any, any kind of engineering firms or, or consultant firms. Um, and I, I haven't received any quotes on what that would be, but just from, from previous experience, I, I believe that would be fifty thousand or more pretty easily to bring somebody in to do that. Um, ours, uh, would probably look differently than, than the word, the way that theirs would, but I believe that we can still reach a, a very, um, acceptable product for our community.
Any other comments? Has the city done some surveys in the past? I thought there were some recently here in the past year or two, asking about parks, uh, bike trail, things like that. They have access to all that information as well?
Yep, and so we'd wanna utilize some of those past surveys and the past data incorporating with new data we're receiving. Um, we've, we had a capital improvement plan survey, I'm gonna say in twenty-one, or, um, I think it was twenty-one, we had the recreational survey, or rec, rec-trail survey. Um, last fall, we had a survey on one particular park, would be East Center Park, and that might be something that, that folks are familiar with as we were looking at, um, trying to determine what to do with, uh, the park assets that are there. So we, we do surveys and other, um, inputs from the public from time to time, and this would be, I think, similar but also a more robust effort. We're looking at, of course, a, a survey to get a nice breadth of da- data for our purposes and also doing some focus groups or some, um, some public meetings so that the public can come and, and go through some activities to give us that same kind of input. And that, um, isn't as, as, uh, much of the breadth for data, but more of depth for data, so we can have those, those conversations with anybody who is interested, whether it's in small groups or one-on-one.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick comment, I think anytime we can bite off some of this internally is, is beneficial for us to save some money, uh, 'cause you get those planning documents that do, they're, they're expensive. And so, um, to take this on, I know it's gonna be added weight for Mike and the crew and others, but, uh, I think it's a, it's a good deal.
The other opportunities in that it may allow, and that is, uh, or grants, and that because we do, would then have a plan on hand that could be viewed.
Any other comments? Mike?
Well, you guys summed it up pretty good. Um, I think that everybody's got a different view of what they want for park areas, what they see, and I mean, this is where the person that isn't involved in a major organization can still have a say on something that might be overlooked by the vast majority of the people, so. Quality of life, um, you know, there's new e- expansions that we're gonna be looking into of park areas that are up in the northeast corner of town, that we purchased property and et cetera, so what do we want for amenities at that? Do we, you know, in that, with a plan, we can actually move forward and improve our current park areas, is the way we look at it as.
And we can get those items and use it to help plan for our yearly budgets as well?
Correct.
All right. Any, anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion for item, uh, number twenty-seven.
I'll make a motion to direct staff to create a parks master plan.
Second that motion?
All right, with a motion and a second, all in favor signify by stating aye.
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 All appro- or all opposed, same sign? All right, that motion carries, thank you, uh, everyone involved there. We'll move into item number twenty-eight, acknowledge the resignation of Commissioner Sarah Cronin effective August first, twenty-twenty-five. Jameson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Another sad resignation that we have to, uh, to face here as, as a city commission, um, but we understand that, that Commissioner Cronin is, is moving outside the city limits. She's asked if there's anything we can do to, to, to change that, but unfortunately, the law is very, very strict that you have to be a resident of the city to represent, uh, the city, so, um, I, uh, speaking my, my own behalf, I'd, I'd be, I'm very sad to see this come through, but excited for you as you, as you make that move and happy that you're still staying in the community.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add to that, uh, thank you for the effort and that that she's put into being a commissioner and representing the city and that during the time that she's been with us.
All right, any additional comments, Sarah?
Thank you, guys, um, for everything that you've done for me. Um, I am, it was a very hard decision and I am s- really sad to go, but, uh, life changes and with my move just slightly out of town, I still have a Madison address, but Jameson won't let me be a city commissioner anymore.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
For your time.
And thank you for your commitment to the finance office as the finance commissioner. It's been a pleasure working with you and your collaboration and showing up to, um, events and contributing, um, on higher levels has been great.
Thank you, it has been great working with you.
With that, I will, uh, entertain a motion to acknowledge the resignation of Commissioner Cronin effective July first. August first. Excuse me.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge resignation of Commissioner Sarah Cronin effective August first, twenty-twenty-five, after I also say thank you for your service.
I will second that as well, thank you, Sarah. All right, all in favor signify by stating aye.
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 All opposed, same sign?
I really wanted to.
All right, motion carries. Item number twenty-nine, is this a record, Jameson? How many?
It might be.
Items have we?
I don't know.
Uh, item twenty-nine, approval of the application and appointment process of city commission vacancy.
Of course, we did just go through this process and, uh, so I think we're, we're familiar, we just, uh, kind of built a process that I think worked pretty smoothly, and so this is proposing the, the same process to fill this vacancy, albeit in an expediated manner. Um, last time, we, we knew that Commissioner Shaw was gonna be leaving a few months in advance, so we had, um, some, uh, ability to, to spread that out, and now we feel that, uh, we have had a recent process where folks in the community who are interested had already thought about that, many already put the work into that, and we feel like we can, um, have this be a little bit quicker process. So, um, if, if this is the direction you'd like to see us move, the timeline that I proposed in this application packet is that the application is be released tomorrow. They'd be due Wednesday, July sixteenth, so that'd be nine days from now by the end of the day. We'd have commission, uh, interviews with the commission on Tuesday, July twenty-second, so that'd be the day after our, um, typical Monday meeting on July twenty-first, and then we would be able to have, uh, the swearing in of that individual by the next meeting, which is Monday, August fourth. I'll stand by for any questions or, or direction from the commission.
Same process, similar, well, identical to what we did. Seemed to work from what I saw. Any other? I was gonna say, I think the last process was really good, you got some of those people that had been thinking about it for quite some time who jumped into the process, and this gives those people who may were on the fence a little bit, it'll give them a week to submit an application and maybe, uh, come in for the interview, so. I'd like to make a motion to approve this process for replacement of the city commission vacancy.
Second?
Uh, with a motion and a second, and that, from the past process, I'll, uh, take a roll call vote for item number, or, and I'll just take, all in favor signify by stating aye, excuse me. Aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries, we'll jump into item twenty-nine, city update, Jameson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for our monthly updates, I'll give Amy a moment to pull those up. We are definitely in full swing of construction, as anybody who's successfully made of this building can see, we are surrounded by construction, but it's all great stuff, all improvements to our, to our utilities and our street infrastructure. All right, so the next slide's got the active projects that, that, uh, we have been monitoring, and many of those are on this, this update, so we'll go ahead and move into our major infrastructure updates. So these are our street and utility projects on, um, segment four, reseeding has been completed, and then asphalt patching is, it was completed on July, um, second. Ryan, remind me which segment four it is?
That's the Loop Line out by the industrial park.
That's right, okay, yep, so the Loop Line lot that was, was, uh, completed over the winter, and now they've been able to do the last, the last patching of that the last few days, and so that project is, is very near full completion. Segment five A, this is, uh, the one that is, um, in front of our, well, five B's in front of our building, five A was the first phase of that that occurred last year. Um, so they've completed underground, underground utilities in the seventh Union intersection, and they're completing, uh, unclassified excavation and subgrade, um, as well. The soil cement operations are planned for the week of, this, this week, July seventh to July, July eleventh. Segment five B is the one that is on Highland Avenue, um, in front of our building here. They're completing the water services that head out to the east of the community, as well as the sanitary sewer and the water main tie-in at the fourth and Highland intersection, and then completing the sanitary sewer at the her, third and Highland intersection. So last week, the, the streets went from being opened for, for traffic, one lane going each direction, and then closed for approximately twenty working days, so that the intersection work and some of the, um, additional utilities could be completed, um, without that traffic coming through. Um, we know as, as good as, as much as anybody that that's a, a challenging, um, road to have closed for, for some time, and it makes it difficult to get to some of our buildings here. Uh, the staff have been working hard to try to update the signage and, and get things going there. Uh, Ryan, do you have anything to add or updates?
Um, yeah, maybe I'll just mention that I've re- I've, we've reached out to the contractor, we've, we've driven the routes and looked at the, the closures, and, uh, we just feel like it's inadequate. Our, our initial plan was to have Union Avenue completed now, and that was supposed to be our, our detour route was coming up Union Avenue and then utilizing Third Street and Fourth Street, but because that project is behind and we're in the penalty phase of that project, um, Union is, is not open, and so we're kind of reeling and dealing with the, the fallout of that. Um, some of the things that we've reached out to the contractor for is to, uh, furnish and install some additional traffic control signage, so, um, I've asked them through an R F P to, to submit a, a cost for furnishing and installing a variable message signs so we can change that message and indicate to, to folks in advance of the project where the closures are and the, uh, appropriate detour route. Um, and then we would also like to install some, uh, you know, additional detours and , uh, arrow signage, and then have a special sign made up that indicates that Highland, Highland Avenue is closed from Fourth Street to First Street. And then that would, that would be installed at that Union Avenue intersection, we feel like it would be a lot, provide a lot more clarity. Um, it's still going to be a long route to get around the construction, especially until that Union Avenue project is complete, um, but I, I think that this plan is, is the best we can do. Um, you know, I do wanna apologize to the public and anyone that was a motorist the day, all of the traffic control set up for five B, um, we felt like we had a good plan in place, but the execution was, was terrible. Um, they started setting up the traffic control from the middle out instead of the outside in, and that created a lot of congestion, we had a lot of trucks that made it way too far into the construction zone and had to back up, so, um, it was definitely not ideal, wasn't how we wanted that to go, so I just, I wanna apologize to the commission and to the general motoring public for that.
Any questions on that project in particular before I move on?
Ryan and I did talk after we got a phone call and that from a couple truckers, uh, to put signage further out so that trucks aren't on the inside lane by the time they get up there to that intersection by Classic Corner and, and so, uh, 'cause usually they're in the left-hand lane, and then makes it difficult for them to get to the right-hand lane, so that's been looked into.
Yeah, yep, so that would be included in that, uh, R F P that we're, we're asking of the contractor, so, um, that's a component of it as well, I failed to mention that.
We'll move on to Egan Avenue. Um, this is, uh, um, phases one, two A and two B are planned for this constr- Two A and two B are planned for this construction season and their earlier, um, change order was related to this project. So, so far they've completed the utility work from second street to third street. Uh, they've also are working on all the sub base work. And then this week they have a number of operations planning to start, which is, uh, uh, wall, drain tile, irrigation line conduit, um, gravel base, and then, yeah, electrical this week as well. And then once that, uh, is wrapped up, uh, potentially beginning on the eleventh, we'll have the concrete work for the surfacing on this project. Questions on Eagan? Okay, we'll move to the next slide. See, these are some other major infrastructure projects that are, are not related to streets and, and utilities. First is our Park Creek Walls. So site number two is the last of our three sites that, that's still ongoing. And they have completed the steel piling, the concrete footing and wall. And then they are currently working on the construction of the facade wall. And we have two airport projects, the, um, that are listed on, on the slides here, the Apron and Tax Lane Project and the, um, Airport Pavement Maintenance Project. And those are both having a start date of today.
Ryan, on the, the Park Creek Wall project, structurally, everything is in place. The rain, running water does not affect the integrity currently. Is that correct?
Yeah. So everything is protected. Um, if you, if you look at that photo that's up there where the two gentlemen are standing there, there's still some additional concrete that work that needs to happen behind that, uh, the rock wall portion there. Just that, that tie-in there is a little bit of an odd situation where, um, you know, prior to the flood damage, the, the rock wall was actually the structure of the, of the wall. And in those areas where it failed, you see the, the concrete poured wall and then there's a footing below that. And so that, that poured wall and that footing now act as that structural support. And so the rock wall that's going in now is just a facade wall. It's, it's simply for looks. The rains have definitely slowed down progress. I, I think we would be, you know, much further if we hadn't, didn't have to pump out water every other day. And so that's definitely, you know, impacting the schedule. However, we feel pretty good where we are as far as, you know, structural components and, um, protection from any further failures.
Thank you.
We want to give another plug for our communication opportunities. And so, um, as we have been in, uh, focusing on our communication and our engagement with the community, um, here's some stats from this year. So from January one to July two, about five months, um, we've worked on additional Facebook advertising flyers, uh, you know, through, worked through the commission meetings, City Circle. We had our first online City Circle here recently. We also did insert in the utility bill. And with those, some of those efforts, you can see the increase in, in engagement that we've seen on some of our, our platforms and, um, as high as thirteen percent in a number of those categories. Two percent on the public works and utilities may not seem like a large amount, but those two, uh, areas in particular already had a large following and by far are the bigger ones. So to have increase in that is, is also good because that's a good number of, of people that are coming through to, to watch those as well. So we encourage if anybody interested to stay informed through our social media, through our website, and they can find, um, uh, our text alerts as well to be a good way to stay engaged with what the city is working on. Um, on more on the IT side of things, uh, our Secure South Dakota Project is underway. That was something they received commission approval a few meetings ago. And they are looking at our firewall and that's the, the first thing they're looking at and that is through partnership with SISA, the Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency, as well as Dakota State. Yeah. Move the next slide there. Um, I briefly mentioned that our City Circle went online, uh, last week and we had a great turnout with that. At any given point, we seemed to have fifteen to twenty or maybe more people watching and engaging on Facebook Live. And so Commissioner Cronin, Mayor Lindsay and myself were, were commenting and taking questions via message, um, on, on Facebook Live. Some different topics. Scooters was a big one. I think the fact that we were working this ordinance and had it on tonight's agenda was very timely because I think scooters were probably brought up three different times during that, that Facebook Live. And as you can imagine, people are, are on their phones, they're scrolling, they, they find it, they start listening, they start engaging. And so as we are having that hour with the public, there's people that are coming on at any point during that hour. And so scooters were brought up multiple times. There was also questions on, on annexation processes, our infrastructure projects, as well as utility rates and a whole bunch of other topics as well. Really good event. Uh, move on to our library. So they've had their summer reading program is, is, uh, midway and they're having a lot of success there. And you'll see that we've noted that we had two hundred and forty-three readers, aged six to twelve, read almost seventy-one thousand minutes in the month of June. Don't worry, I did the math for you. That's almost twelve hundred hours of reading. So that's a lot of reading from our youth in the community and we're very excited to see, see the passion that they are seeing in books and in our library. Upcoming events to the library. Uh, Will Stuck's got Pigment of Your Imagination. That's a teen event on July fifteenth from four to five. And then Paint and Pastries, uh, something we all can get behind, I think, Thursday, July twenty-fourth from six-thirty to seven-thirty. Enjoying pastries while painting. If you're, maybe you can just show up and eat pastries too. I'm, I'm gonna have, ask Lisa, Lisa that question, so. Um, and finally, I want to note that the art show for the youth is gonna be at the same time as International Night Out Downtown Mad Town on August fifth. They're gonna have their art show since their theme for this year is Color Our World. Encourage people to check out the art from our youth. Um, as we've already been discussing on this agenda, we have a, this city commission vacancy. And so just noting some of the details on that, um, the, it's, all city commission terms are three-year terms. And since Sarah was sworn in in twenty twenty-four, correct, Sarah? Whoever you appoint will have to, um, run again this next election. Every, every time you appoint somebody, they're appointed till the next election. And so her term goes to twenty twenty-seven. So in twenty twenty-six, the, somebody will be having the opportunity, anybody will have the opportunity to run for that last one year on the, the term. There is a city residency requirement. Sorry, Sarah. Uh, if you want to get an application, there's a QR code there. If you go on our city website, we're gonna have a button that pops up on the left-hand side for the commission vacancy. And if anybody has any questions, we do know this is a quicker process. We've got it open for just over a week. Please call, stop in and we're happy to help you with those applications. This month, our Good Neighbors Great Madison campaign is making note to please do not park in sidewalks. And, and this is something that is just to show consideration for all sorts of pedestrian traffic in our town. It could be someone in a wheelchair or, um, somebody pushing a stroller, kids on their bikes. Those are things that we want to keep on the sidewalks. We do not want them suddenly going into the, into the street where then we have oncoming traffic. I know that sometimes it can be a pain if you don't have enough room or if you just parked and you didn't realize that you're over that sidewalk. We really encourage people to stay clear of that. Even a trailer hitch sticking out on the sidewalk can be very hazardous if you are a bicyclist at night. And we want everybody to be aware of the dangers of parking in sidewalks. Phew. Good month of updates. Any questions on anything I've discussed or anything else in your mind? Okay, with that, Mr. Toby Morris is gracing us tonight. Thank you, Toby, for making the trip up from Sioux Falls. We, um, Mr. Chair, I, I, we can move back to item twenty-two.
We will, yeah. Item twenty-two, approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, approving and recommending tax incremental district plan number seven. Toby?
While Toby's coming up, I'll, I'll note for the commission, we have three things on the agenda tonight and they are all related to the, the creation and approval of tax increment financing district number seven. And, uh, we'll start out with the, the resolution. But, but Toby, I, I think I'd ask you to speak towards the whole project as a whole. And, and if some of these items get blurred together, I think that's okay. It might help the, the group to understand the differences between all of them. So feel free to speak towards whatever you like.
Thanks, Jameson. Um, thanks, Mayor Roy. No, I like the name. Uh, Toby Morris, I know I've been a frequent face before you in the past. Uh, once again, Madison has another exciting project. It's, uh, truly amazing how much you guys are the leader in the state. Sometimes when your own, your own city, you don't think that you are, but between what's going on with DSU, the housing development, the proposed one that you have here, uh, what you have is really an experienced varsity developer coming to town to put up a nice, uh, twelve-unit complex. And we have them here and maybe it's best I can let them explain a little bit about the project. I can go through the TIF, but it's, it, it's an extremely exciting project for what you're seeing in terms of the new construction. It's not your, your regular look, you might say. It's, it's a, it's a contemporary look. But the best part is, is you have an experienced developer. You have a proven developer. And in my line of work, that's one of the first thing that we always do is do a research of who is this person coming in or they say they're gonna do what they're gonna do. And everything that we have verified is, the answer's yes. And maybe I'll turn it over.
Yeah, thank you, Toby. Thank you all for being here and hearing me out. Kellen Bludorn with Sodak Construction. We've been building multifamily housing for the last fifteen years in eastern South Dakota. We started out with small town fourplexes and duplexes. And now we've been moving into this twelve-plex building that we can build multiple buildings in stages. Get a building done, start filling it, get another building done and kind of work our way through the project. This one here is, uh, four twelve-plexes, consists, each twelve-plex has eight two-bedroom units, two one-bedrooms and two studios. So it has a, a blend of units there. We found a pretty cool design there where you can have your own, um, exterior door for each person with kind of a open garden, uh, open style of entrance for the stairways. And we try to put a modern flair on it as far as the style goes and try to have a cohesive look for the neighborhood. But obviously make it look kind of trendy and nice and modern for the new tenants to want to live there. Um, with that, we, we always try to build with efficiency in mind, with the size, um, thinking of pricing, things like that to try to meet the, the price recommendation by our property manager for each specific, specific town that we're in. So currently we have these projects going in Watertown, uh, Yankton, Brookings, and we have them all in the small towns in between. We're small-town guys from Lake Norton, just north of you here. Yeah. So we look forward to working with the city of Madison. Thank you.
So, so some of the key components when you look at the ta, uh, tax increment plan is Department of Revenue's looked at this and verified it as affordable housing. So there is a restriction on that rent, uh, for the first five years as it goes through. I have in one of the pages here that lists the, the eighty percent AMI. Their rent will be below that. If not, then they have a bigger consequence and that would be a, a violation of the, the tax increment. When you go back to your housing study in twenty twenty-two, it reflects a need of forty to roughly sixty multifamily in that one-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments. Now granted, that's three, three and a half years old and you've still experienced some growth within that. So I think that this is going to tackle a lot of that need, not by necessarily means all of that need. But it fits within the housing plan that was, um, or the housing study as identified roughly three, three and a half years ago on that. We've looked and verified with the costs and based on the engineer's projections. And one item I guess I'd really point out is page eighteen. And what we have in there is the, the land, the engineering and the site work, infrastructure that's related to this project. You'll see there's a very, very little interest component on that. The reason why is a TIF only pays so much. And so even though you may have five million of expenditures, doesn't mean you'll have five million of revenue. If you look at what's possibly coming up this next year in governor's cycle, there's a few of those that might think they're gonna eliminate property tax, but that is a complete risk that's put on the developer and not as a city. This is a conduit pass-through like your other TIFs that we've designed for you. It does not count as constitutional debt. A hundred percent of the risk is on, uh, the developer. At the end of the day, we'll sum up everything and, and per the developer agreement certify those costs so that we know exactly that those costs were incurred and you're reimbursing only those costs associated with it. The total all-in is a million eighty and, um, my projections, as you know, in the past, they're, they're very conservative. I would see it as about a fifteen, sixteen-year, but I would put the caveat that's unknown, unknown until the next governor comes in what they're doing with property tax. But I think it's fair to say we will have some reform in property tax. Again, that's on the risk of the developer, not of the community. Uh, so it's, uh, I, I, I would say it's a very solid plan, solid developer. Everything's in place for construction.
Maybe one thing to add, we do intend to get started this fall. It's our goal to get going in September timeframe. I guess we're working on all the quotes and everything right now and feel pretty confident we can start moving dirt this fall if we have approval of all this here.
Any questions from the commission? On, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five thirteen or any of the TIF? Number seven, project details?
I will say the project has gone through planning and zoning and they've asked a lot of questions and got the answers and that that they were looking for. And, and, uh, we've worked with Toby on multiple, uh, TIFs in the past. So I feel very confident in that, that he's done his homework and, uh, is presenting something in that that will work very well for the city.
That was my question, the zoning and all good from that standpoint, Brian?
Yeah, they, they came for a conditional use. So, uh, Perkins is a conditional use in that highway business zone and that was approved unanimously. Um, and then they also shared that project plan in the, in the TIF with the planning commission as well. Like Mayor Lindsay said, they had a lot of, a lot of questions, a lot of good questions, but, uh, and they were very supportive.
I know this doesn't pertain to this exact, uh, TIF, Jameson, but how are we sitting with? This is obviously number seven. Are all seven still open? I believe that was in the report.
Yeah, no, um, Toby, you know what page that was? They are not all open.
Or explain where we sit.
Yeah, well, well, he's looking for that. I'll, I'll, I'll kind of back up and just give an overview on, on TIF districts. It's something that I think receives a lot of talk and sometimes not enough explanation. And if you're listening online or if you're new to it, you might not understand what this is meaning. So what, what a TIF district does is it uses future property tax revenues from a project to finance the, some of the associated costs with that project. So if this project doesn't happen, those property tax, uh, the increase in property tax doesn't occur and, and we're, 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 we stay where we're at today. When the project happens, property taxes go up and, and we commit to a developer that we're gonna take that increase in revenue and we're gonna allow them to use that for certain expenses to infrastructure. In this case, the, the property that they're looking at is unique in its topography as, as well as shape. Um, it, it takes a decent amount of, of street infrastructure to get into the property where these buildings can be built. So you have streets, curbs, water sewer, um, that sort of infrastructure. And there's also a topography challenge of, of, uh, grading. There can be a lot of grading, is my understanding. It, it does slope there quite a bit. It can have a retaining wall part of it. So those are the expenses that the future property tax revenues increases will go to help pay for. And they're able to, to, uh, finance that through, uh, through a lender and, um, commit this, this property tax, um, to that, to that cause. In this case, it's one point zero eight million. And as Toby mentioned, there, it's expected with the current conditions to be paid off in about fifteen to sixteen years. With that, Toby, did you find which page reference the current?
Page eight.
Eight?
Sorry, she's got it up on screen.
Yep. So page eight shows all the base values as of with Department of Revenue. I would have to verify in terms of what some of the outstanding debt may be, but I know there's gotta be at least two or three that are in the near future of being paid off. And so we can verify with Amy and go back and track, but I, I know they're at the very tail end of that.
Yes, TIF two and three are about to expire.
Yep.
Thank you.
And there is no TIF for it never came to fruition?
Correct. That was registered, but they assigned a number. You know, and one of those TIFs in there, you might recall, we had assigned to the city as we're looking to tackle that truck bypass route. So that is truly for the benefit of the city on that one. Um, I also know in one of them, there was a revenue share with HME again to try to tackle that truck bypass route.
So the first item for discussion and consideration is the resolution. So this creates the district. This sets the boundaries for a TIF district. It's, it sets the, I guess it sets the boundaries and states this is the area that we deem is blighted and we like to see improvements be made. The second action is then to approve a project plan. So that outlines what the project will be and legally what the city and the developer are intending to do with that district. And then the third action is to approve a development agreement and this would be the legal contract between the city and that developer. And that allows them to receive that increment. We'll stand by for any questions.
I just have questions regarding the map, the boundaries you have set there. It appears there's some proposed, um, stuff to be built on the west side as well as the northeast corner that are outside that TIF district. Is there a reason why you didn't want to include that in that as well?
We just included the property owner itself as the true increment is, is what we looked at it.
I was just looking at attachment three. It shows, um, stuff to the west of the TIF district there. That'd be outside of it. And then there's some to the northeast. I was just curious.
Oh, the future building on that side. Yeah.
So that isn't included in this initial phase? That's just something for, okay.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't available for us to purchase at the time. So this was the lot that was available for us to purchase from the owner.
So are there any streets after this is completed that we're going to have to maintain? Or is this all private roadways that are going to be built into there? Or that would be a street from the south?
Yep, so this is private infrastructure that we put in. So they are able to use increment funding to pay for the, the streets, but it will not be a city street.
It's not something that we'd have to maintain.
It's going to be privately owned and maintained street.
And when you look at that map, and I don't have it in front of me now, so I'm coming off of memory, but when you look at that map, there are multiple owners in those, in that patchwork. And so they're just addressing the property in that, that they have, that they're planning on developing.
Correct. I like to keep the districts concise and precise and not expandable so we know exactly what we're dealing with.
Any further questions? Jamison here.
Having sat through the hearings and that, that they've had at this point in time and the planning and zoning and that, I do support this.
Thank you. With that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Resolution 2025-13, approving and recommending tax incremental district plan number seven.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-13, approving and recommending tax incremental district plan number seven.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor signify by stating aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We will now move into item number 23, approve tax incremental district number seven, project plan. Jamison, do you have anything to add?
Again, this is the, the document that outlines what the project's going to be and what the city's responsibility and the developer's responsibilities are in relation to this district.
Any other questions, concerns? All right, I'll entertain a motion for item 23, approve tax incremental district number seven, project plan.
I'll make a motion to approve tax incremental district number seven, project plan.
I'll second that motion.
The motion in a second, all in favor signify by stating aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Item 24, approve tax increment district number seven, development agreement. Jamison, anything additional there?
This is the final action for this project and this is the legal contract between the city and the developer, which is Sodak Construction.
Did we, did we develop this or the developer did?
Toby, you want to tackle that?
It's a, a document we put together similar to the previous one and I believe your own counsel has reviewed local as well as minor Henry. So there's been three sets of eyes on it. Six if you count my glasses.
Then we're more than covered. I'll entertain a motion for item 20, number 24.
Motion to approve item 24.
Second.
The motion in the second, any further discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Approved, same sign. All right, motion carries. That concludes our regular agenda. Do we have any, anyone here for public comment? All right, into announcements, our next regular commission meeting will be Monday, July 21st at 5:30 in this room. Next item 32 is executive session 1-25-2. Thank you, everyone.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
And I'll just mention in that, that Jamison and I have briefly visited and I will visit with him when I'm back in the office. So at this point in time, I will not attend via Zoom.
Thank you.
Thank you, you did a great job.
All right, we are now entering exec. Thank you, guys.